All right, it's nine oh one A M. February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. We're gonna start this meeting off with a prayer and I'm gonna ask Brother Philip.
Tony, Father, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We call on your precious name once again, Lord, asking you for your guidance. We realize, Father God, that everything that we do should be pleasing to your sight, so we just pray, Father God, that you leave our hearts to make the right decision that will benefit our citizens in this county. Lord, Father God, you know all our needs, and we just lean on you, Father, as we pray this morning in Jesus's name. Amen.
All the meeting ordered, and we do have a court. Do we have anybody signed up for public? Okay, well, we don't have anything for public here, and so we'll close it. We got consent agenda. I seen your email on the minutes yesterday, so.
That was for August twenty first, August twenty fourth, September twelfth, and December.
Okay.
I'm almost done. We'll have last year's part.
All right. Yeah, we'll move on along. We're actually gonna skip down to fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen for the treasurer's office. Because the standard is out and they're working on payroll, so item number fifteen is approve county treasurer as investment officer, and that's.
It's the same type of work that we do every single year. This is the first one that we do. They're all supposed to be approved separately or whatever, and the first one we do is the resolution, and it is just to approve Ginger as the county investment officer. Done this every single year, and it.
Hang on just a second, let me cut that off.
Hey, somebody's drilling or cutting out there. Can we get you to stop till we finish? All right, thank you. If it shut that down, so we need a motion to approve Ginger as our county treasurer as our investment officer.
I make that motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Powell. Say goodbye, Commissioner Fonda. Be all in favor. All against. All right. Item number sixteen.
Okay, this is the we're approving and adopting the investment policy. And just like the previous one, it's all this, there's no changes whatsoever.
Our motion is made by Commissioner Fonda. Say goodbye, Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, item number seventeen is approve the investment policy.
Previous to the investment policy, that's much planning, so we just leave the signature.
Thank you. All right, motion made by Commissioner Fonda.
That's it.
Seconded by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, so we'll go back up. Item number one is authorize Goodwin, Lesser, and Strong GLS to advertise bids for the GLO PDBG MIT drainage projects, and it's GLO contract number twenty-two dash zero eight two dash zero one eight dash D two twenty. Easy for you to say. All right, and this.
This is, this is the MIT project, bridges at locations in precincts one, two, and three. Still don't have the contract from GLO, as I understand, the amendment, the signed amendment. I was trying to, wanted to bring you back up to court. It's been a year since we advertised this. We were over budget. We went back and scaled the project back, basically cut it in half. Take it out, I didn't get, didn't get a chance to visit with you. Basically, we cut Davidson Road off, and you're still getting just this Klein's Ferry, the bridge there. Okay, now visit with, with pressure the precinct one and two, show them what they were getting on plans. No change in actual plans or the design of what we did, because this was a fast way to get it back out on the street, but we are still waiting on GLO, as I understand it, on the, on the signed amendment.
But we're gonna go on and get, go out for bids. Be ready, right?
So as soon as they sign, plus that's, that's just more pressure we can then put on them. We got bids in hand. We gotta take action on them.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fonda. Seconded by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? All right, item number two is approve CAC County Information Resources Agency, CERA, Agreement for Web Hosting Services for Newton. And it's fifteen hundred and fifty dollars, and they host the county website. And this is a yearly, yearly thing. So that's an annual prize. Yes.
And thank y'all.
So it's something, you know, they host the county website. All the information is put out on, on the website. So.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fonda. I'll second it. All in favor? All against? All right, item number three, approve NCIC Communications Agreement for Newton County Jail. Just for phone and video communication services for the inmate. And that's the sheriff.
He's not here for me.
Okay. Huh?
He was the partner.
Okay. All right. I tell you what, we'll skip over the sheriffs, and we'll move down to item number ten. Accept appointment of Robert Samuel, Tommy Mahellen, and Wayne Moore to serve as commissioners for E S D number two for a term of two years, and that's for the E S D board for drop free.
Newton County Sheriff District.
I make that motion. All right, motion made by Commissioner Benson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, item number eleven is accept E S D number two's twenty twenty-four budget. And again, that's Mr. West here. They have brought their twenty twenty-four budget for us to review.
If I have a letter where we adopt it. Seven twenty-four. And we would be standing in the black again.
What is the budget?
Our budget runs about seventy-eight, eighty thousand dollars. We collect in about ninety thousand, and we normally spend about sixty.
I make that, I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fonda. Seconded by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against?
End of year report returning.
All of the E S Ds are supposed to be doing that, the same thing. And this is the only one that does it, so the rest of them are not in compliance, and we could take actions towards them, removing board members.
Okay, I do. Do they know that, Courtney? Does the private parts do know that?
It's not private parts.
I understand. I get them. Okay. Well, I know we had discussed it last year or a year before, a year before that, when Howard come spoke to us about that. I just, the E S D, my precinct, I would hate to see any of those folks removed. They all do a good job, which is maybe put the expectation out there, and they may know it, but you know, they have a clear expectation and.
I need to send them all a letter detailing what they.
I sent them all a letter, let them know that they were not in compliance, and they must have got up in compliance.
Can you do that again? Thank you.
Thank you, volunteer.
But hey, you said you've already, you've got the template.
We've been talking about all.
That's Misty's. That's Misty's job. And I don't have the other item yet.
The other item is just our end of year report this year. I turned it in with.
Okay.
And then I reported to the state. I have two things. I reported to the state. Already done that for last year. Then our inventory, inventory, every piece of equipment, every other phone, everything is in the books. Our commission has made, we require three, three hours a year, C E, and we had eight point five hours of C E.
All right. We appreciate your.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you for your, your hard work.
Diligence and staying compliant.
And we do have a copy of it when you brought us.
You made copies, you know, date when I was up.
Yes.
Thanks, Howard. Thanks.
So could you provide a copy that I can take back to the E S Ds, just as an example?
Which, which part of you want?
Yes. All of it. It just, I mean, if the judge has it, you know, the latter, but I just got the.
This is the main book I can do right there. All right, that's perfect. It, it lists everything. Every piece of equipment, everything we have, all our C E's, all our members, our board, our department, everything's in there. And this is all, every check we write, every, every electronic thing we do is in the.
I feel good that they had that, but this is probably just an exact.
That's what you have to turn to the state.
Yeah. Thank you.
And you can get it back to him when you can.
Okay.
All right, moving down to item number eleven. Oh, I mean, twelve, approve appointment of Olin Bean as district president of the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District for a three-year term beginning January the first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I make that motion. Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Fonda. Seconded by Commissioner Powell. All in favor? All against?
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I know you got the letter that, that this position, Roger Posel was our president. He passed away for part of January, we have a vice president, so I'm just moving up into that position. But the president on the board has to be approved by all four county commissioners courts, and that's the only, only option that, that has to be approved there. But whenever all this happens, once I approve all four courts, my position for Newton County will be vacant, and so this court will need to appoint somebody to take my place. And right now, the the board is made of, each board member from the county has certain responsibilities assigned with them, although, I mean, we're far behind the whole county. Like, Cody Jones is from the city of Newton. He's there, and he represents municipal water, and then Thomas Hawthorne is on the board with me as well, from Newton County, and he represents Ag and Forestry. And then my position is the rural water supply. And so, you know, you'll need to appoint somebody. And they don't have to be affiliated. I wasn't with rural water supply or anything, but that's just the way it's broken down. And whoever you appoint, John Mark and I talked the other day. We meet the first Thursday of every month, except December, and during the summer months, our, our numbers go in pretty good. We kind of get real close without having a forum, so we need somebody that's going to be committed, and we meet at the Jasper E O C in, in their building up there, and John's office is in that building. Makes it a little convenient for him, but one of our, our board members drives all the way from Longerton, and he and I talked about somebody from, from Deweyville, but that's a pretty good drive. We both talked about that, for them to come once a month. There is no real burden on mileage. This is just, you know, one of those deals you do. And so I just, you know, it's got to consider that, that individual, whoever, make sure they're committed to beat up all the meetings anyway.
You have anybody in mind yourself?
No, he and I talked about Mr. Lane and Miss Lane. I don't know if he's still with the you know, South Newton Water Supply down there or not, and I'm not sure his time would afford. He's the only employee they have, I think, besides Brandy there in the office, but maybe one of their board members that's there might be interested. I'm not sure. You know, we didn't have, you know, any suggestions on that. But we've got, you know, up this direction is covered pretty good between Thomas and Cody, so we were just thinking, trying to get, you know, make sure we had somebody from the south end of the county, especially since South Newton is the side one plan. And, you know, a lot of members down there.
So are you gonna reach out to those? Are you gonna reach out to those folks?
No, I don't know. I'm, I'm just.
That's our job. Well, I just thought she might already have talked to them about.
I have seen, John Mark, who's our manager.
Yeah.
He and I just missed about that. It was all we did. He asked me if I had anybody, and I told him no, I didn't know anybody. I knew his old friend and what's his name, but.
I'm trying to think of who you're talking about. You're talking about Gary?
No, he's older gentleman been down there with us out in, did a lot. So after the floods down there with all the grippers, officers, and all those were flooded and burned up.
Not sure exactly who you're talking about.
I had him in my county club, but I don't know. But he, he's just, he takes care of everything there, all the water valves and sewer part of it. There at Deweyville. He's in the office there on the spur.
Right now, the only two I know of there is the Brandy and Miss Stanley, but.
Okay, well, he, he was.
Yeah.
After, you know, he had.
Talking about Gary Langford, Langston, Gary Langston. He's on the board now, but he's not working anymore, so. But I mean, there's, there's a lot of good candidates down there, and I'm sure in other areas of the county, we can. Maybe you and Mr. Olin can.
Yeah, we can.
With a man.
We could figure out, we could figure out a good, good addition to the board.
That's what I'm saying. We need first Thursday of every month, except December, we're gonna have an evening in December. That'd be John. Time off there as well, usually not much appears in store. That would just be the drive with John. That was our concern, driving to Deweyville. And, and we really needed somebody that, you know, make most of, the majority of the meetings. They were able to make the majority of the meetings for us.
Okay. I think, I think we should be able to find somebody help y'all out. All right, thanks, Olin. All right, I seen the sheriffs here, so.
Finish the thirteen fourteen.
Okay. Thirteen is approve appointment of, of myself as Newton County's representative to the Deco Board of Directors and reappoint Commissioner Philip White as Newton County's minority representative to the Deco Board.
I make that motion good. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell. Seconded by Commissioner Fonda. All in favor? All against? All right, now, number fourteen on this page is approve interlocal cooperative, cooperation agreement contract for failure to appear program, and this is a letter we got from the state. They've changed the laws on the on their program, and they asked us to reapprove it. So it's something that's, it's been ongoing for many years. It's just, they changed, changed a little wording on it and asked us to reapprove it.
General practice is pretty much the same, have you?
Yes.
Okay. There's still such thing as a failure to appear.
Yes.
Okay.
There is a empty.
Laws nowadays, you never know.
There is, there is a failure to appear, and, you know, they do have the authority to pick you up.
It's not a felony now, though. It's not a felony now, though.
I make that motion, Judge. All right, motion made by Commissioner Benson.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. All in favor? All right, all against? All right, now we'll go back up to this.
Only third.
Item number three. It's approved NCIC Communication Agreement for Newton County Jail. That's for phone and video communication services for inmates. And that's Sheriff Burden.
No, I'm late. Hall of School Burger. This is a agreement for us to have a telephone and video, just like it says there, for the inmates that, that they will, right now, we, we have the old system, and this wouldn't kick in in like, I think, August or September, our contract is valid until then, and once that contract expires, we would like to have that. This is a, a new company that we're going with that we already had another part of it, which is the commissary for inmates to be able to order things that we approve for them to be able to get, and it, it's a lot better for us, less wear and tear on the jailers to have the check incoming commissary. That stuff will come here prepackaged and everything, and will be good to go. It will be a, we're not into money per se, we're into safety and more efficiency, and that's what that is all about. This is just another part of it. That part of it with the commissary that I can already sign, I can sign that. Any questions?
So this is actually three and four. The, the number four is, approve commissary express contract for Newton County Jail.
This is, thank.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fonda. Seconded by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? All right, now we'll move down to item number five. Review and update the daily cost of inmates that are housed in the Jasper County Jail from forty dollars to forty-five dollars per day per inmate.
Again, your urgent commissioner, you're in the public. As we move forward in our society, in our country, every year things go up. Normally it's been forty dollars, which is a good saving. Now it's gonna be increased to forty-five, which I still think is a really convenience for us to pay only forty-five dollars with Jasper. Other places around the state, it is high as ninety, some places eighty, so that's a, I recommend to go with that, and this is one of those things I say about the jail. And, uh, this is one of those things I say about the jail, because when we're crowding, we just about have to pay what they ask us to pay. Cause we have no other choice. I'm sitting at thirty inmates on a fourteen jail bay at, right now, I have thirty inmates between Louisiana and parts of Texas, so. Thanks for your consideration to go ahead and do that. Jackson is, uh, Jackson County has been a mainstay for us in so many different ways. And five dollars increase is not that much.
Do we have a contract with them, uh, on a year? So if we approve this, I mean, do we have like another year or two years on it or something like that, do you know?
We, I think that came about when they sent over the, uh, uh, the increase, I think we had that reviewed.
Miss?
Yes. I think what, uh, we had a M O U with them. Uh, and, uh, it was that when I came in, for forty dollars, they changed the name because of the different shirt. Uh, but, uh, I'm not gonna say, this is what, uh, we have to do. Uh, I, I think, I don't can't remember off the top of my head, what we had a money amount in that other contract.
I'm pretty sure we did, pretty sure it was forty.
Let's still forty-five dollars is a good deal.
Yeah, it's a great deal, I was just wondering, you know, with Sheriff Newman not saying as the sheriff, if we're, if we approve, I mean, is there a contract?
Yeah, he was the one that sent it over.
We have the interlocal agreement, so it'll be updated after the first of the year.
So it's good for here.
It'd be good for this year, but the next, I guess, the next year, whatever, whoever, whomever.
I just feel better about if it was a five-year deal right here. Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, the forty-five dollars payment.
All right, second, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Fonda, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, item number six, approved purchase of a jail van from Lake Country Chevrolet in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. And, uh, Lake Country is on the buy board. Uh, the total cost is for setting the vans with, uh, for inmate transport with, uh, screens, back bars, lights. Uh, it's just total package, uh, it's not just the cost of the van. So, Sheriff, you want to explain?
Yeah, uh, the total package is like it's kind of a two phone thing. Uh, you know, a jail van, a transport van, you know, you don't have all the marketing done. Uh, but it has like a cage, uh, where, and things set up on the inside to make it a jail, inmate, inmate, transport, uh, with safety, uh, with the safety requirements and everything, and I think that was by the top of my head, I think it's like twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars for the insert. But basically it is a stripped down vehicle insofar as it doesn't have a whole lot of bells and whistles because the worst case scenario is you're going to have to stop on a side road with lights. You know, hopefully that never happens. And one of the reasons we're going with a jail van, because we're transporting, uh, inmates all over the place. Uh, and I don't see that changing in the near future anyway. And another thing too, we got to look at safety, we got to look at safety for those folks who doing the transport as well as those, the safety of the people having those communities we're going to. Uh, right now, we have to take more than one, uh, person per se, we have to take two vehicles and everything, so we've eaten up gas, we've eaten up time. So this will be an economical and safety practice, uh, going forward. For us to have a van that we can pack on everyone in, uh, go where they need to go. We spend a lot of, general policy down there, we spend a lot of time on the road moving, uh, people from one place to another for one reason or another, uh, because we have to take people to hospitals and, uh, mental institutions and, uh, other places. I ask for your consideration for the jail van, would that for it would get needed?
Sheriff, is this coming out of your budget?
Well, I, I don't have, I think we did only two and a half seventy-five thousand in that, and we have, uh, lease payments to pay this year.
What are you saying?
I'm saying that I don't have the, the vehicle, uh, funds at this time. Uh, what, what budget is that coming out of, twenty-three or twenty-four?
What, what do you got there, Sheriff?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
How much money was left over? On the Sheriff twenty twenty-three?
All right, so in his Sheriff's Department control, he had two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine thirty-one. With that being said, in the jail, he was in the negative of forty-five thousand, three twenty-nine due to, um, running over budget for medicals and, uh, food expenses for the prisoners. Um, so he had a total of two hundred and seventeen thousand, six oh three left out of both of his funds. That rolled over into twenty twenty-four.
Well, you're probably going to run low on your budget now, where you're housing them in Bogart Parish also, but we did not budget that in the budget neither.
Okay, so last year in, um, housing of prisoners, he had a hundred and forty thousand dollar budget. He spent a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars for the remainder of nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, he's going to blow through that this year.
Yeah, and that is.
That's just the housing alone.
Yeah, no fault, uh, of anyone, that's what, uh, the market bears.
Yeah.
Uh, we're doing a yeoman's job and not putting, uh, that many people. But right now, we can, Jasper is, like I said before, and personally, that, you know, they are full up too, you know, we send as many as we can.
Right.
I wish I could send all the ones I have in Louisiana over there, because it's cheaper, that makes good sense, business sense, but I can't. Of that, and, uh, so, you know, it is something that we wrestle with every day, uh, if not every hour, every day. Uh, I am very mindful of how much you're going to cost and everything. Uh, it could even cost more if we didn't, if we didn't have Phillips, uh, uh, over in Louisiana, uh, that's sixty-five dollars, not eighty-two or eighty, uh, ninety-two.
You've got enough money, you're both great, Sheriff.
What, what are you talking about?
For the purchase of the van?
Roll over by here.
Yeah, roll it over.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, you're going to, I mean, are you going to, the thing about it is, he's going to roll it over, but he's also going to lose it.
And he's already lost it, I mean, basically.
But, you know, he went out for bids on his van in December. So it's a twenty-three bill. It's a twenty twenty-three bill, so it, it can be classified as twenty twenty-three, because he actually went out for bid in, in December of twenty twenty-three.
We just have to do a line transfer from one line to the other, so it wouldn't really be a budget amendment if we're on.
All right, I'll make that motion.
If he has, the motion he has.
Oh, thank you.
He had, he had two hundred and seventeen thousand, six oh six, one left.
All right, um, so where's the money coming from? Does that money roll over to?
What, what we have to do is we have to move money from one of his lines that he had left over to his vehicle lines.
Okay, so the money rolled over into the general fund, correct?
It's all, the other things, it all.
All is in the general fund, okay.
We just have to do it, we'd have to go back last year for twenty twenty-three, move money from one of his line items to the other, and it would be that much less than rolled over.
Yeah, we're good doing that?
The line transfer too, we got consultation from Sherry and believe, yes, that's okay to do that.
Okay.
Yes, it's, I mean, we can do it, I'd like to do it, but we will do it. And next year, hopefully, we'll get all our business taken care of before the year end, and we'll have to purchase the older yet.
All right, so who made the motion?
I did.
All right, Commissioner Fonda made the motion. Who names that? Commissioner White, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, item number seven, approved purchase of parts and services to upgrade the jail's intercom system using Guardian Security Solutions in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's Sheriff Burden again.
Yeah, you know, we had, uh, jail inspection back in November, and, uh, one of the things, uh, and I, I thought that, you know, it was uh, that they said that we need to have a two-way system in itself where the inmates can communicate to, uh, the jail staff. Well, uh, that building, this, a jail has been there since the early eighties and no, nothing like that has been there. So they identified that as the efficiency, and we had Guardian, uh, we actually had two quote, we had one quote, uh, uh, from, uh, another company, that is one of fifty-three thousand dollars. And I thought that was a bit much, and we called in Guardian, and they came out and, uh, said they could do for about twenty-three. Uh, to bring us in compliance, uh, with, uh, the jail, uh, commission. And, uh, that's why we're, uh, asking for that, because we have no other choice. Because we got, uh, written up for it on our jail inspection. Also, just another, uh, note, I can't hear those guys back in my office. I mean, they could hear, I mean, but anyway, I, I want, I'm not a jail inspector, I'm just a sheriff.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of parts and services as Sheriff requested, twenty-three thousand, seven.
All right, motion's made by Commissioner Powell. Second, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Just to make sure that was verified.
Yeah, we had it.
Twenty-three, right?
Yeah, we had it looked at in twenty-three.
November. Okay.
The only, the only. I didn't know if you knew that.
I didn't know that, so I think just what we need to be thinking about in the court, we're setting a precedent here. So everyone that has money and, and we need to do whatever, we've got to do this, it's not a matter of we want to, the sheriff don't want to, this is the requirement, we're going to take care of it. But when we start saying we're taking money from twenty-three, everyone that had a budget in twenty-three can go back at the end of the year and come back in February and say, well.
No.
Only if they put it in.
No, this wasn't put in in twenty-three, but, yeah, but this was put in on, this was on your budget in twenty-three?
Yeah, November of twenty-three.
That's what he said. That's when the school, that's when the, the audit was, correct?
I think this, uh, date of the quote was December the twenty, uh, help me out, Sheriff, it's December twenty-third on me, because I went back yesterday to confirm the quote because.
Quote was in twenty-three?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm standing for it, well, I mean, I'm still getting bills for, uh, I'm still getting bills for twenty-three, I got some. I, I understand, but this is the same case, I mean, same.
Done, it's just a quote in twenty-three. So, moving forward, we hope to have it completed in twenty-three.
You probably got.
Yeah, they're planning to do it in the next six, six weeks that we all have to go into town.
Sheriff, I have a question, uh, is that, what else is on the, the, uh, deficiency list? Cause we are investing an awful lot of money, when you get to adding up all these little twenty and threes and whatnot. Is it a list of things, it's just?
No, this, it was the, uh, the over, overflow, overcapacity. Uh, we have big for that, and with the, uh, intercom system. Uh, the other thing with, with minor, we don't have the, doesn't cost anything to fix, intercom system, overcapacity.
Yeah, well, what I, what I'm, we've been talking about this jail situation for how many years now, three at least?
Four, yeah, three.
I mean, it's time for us to put that, move that up on the priority list, I believe. And, uh, we, it, it's time for us to, to really start looking at some designs or plans or something. You know, we, we, uh, other things that are constantly costing us money, uh, we, you know, it's, it's a, a thorn in our side already when we look at the annual cost to house prisoners, uh, for other counties and, and, you know, you get to adding two or three years up and you're talking quite a bit of money. And so I, I'm just saying, we, you know, e- every time we talk about having to add something because it's a requirement, but we have no choice. You know, it's the same thing as housing the prisoners, we, out of room here, so we have no choice. I mean, you're not going to let them back out on the street, I hope. That happened here a few years back, and that was not a, a good sound on the street that Newton County can't, can't, uh, put, put prison, uh, criminals in, because they don't have nowhere to put them.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you for bringing that up, uh, my calculations, we spent over fifty thousand dollars just on infrastructure repairs. And right now, I think, uh, since we're getting up here, uh, we're, we writing in, we starting just where we left off. You know, we got right now, we got a door back there that's not working. Well, there needs to be repaired, we're working on it. We have plumbing issue constantly, you know, thank God that we have not had any problems with the fire panel this year, uh, in the last eight or nine months, because that was another big ticket item last year. Uh, so the things, the infrastructure is really, really falling apart and everything, and, uh, unless we do something definitive and make the plans, uh, going forward, we're going to keep on, uh, sending, uh, bad money, uh, good money behind bad money. That's just the way it is. And with the way things are today, you know, these knuckleheads are not stopping. I mean, we, like you say, I have thirty, I have thirty people in our custody right now, thirty.
Well, just please tell me that you continue to put them in jail if they need to.
I'm going to keep on putting them in jail.
Okay.
We'll find a way.
Okay.
Well, we'll address it as we get to it, but we're not going to, uh, say no, everything, I don't feel right doing that. And, uh, we have had, we got the D A's offices working, does it, and will often always have. If they didn't do what they do, we've been a lot worse fit, we've been a whole lot worse fit than we in right now. And the only thing with the jail, Commissioner Judge, it's, it's not overnight fit. We got to get something started with the jail, because if we start today, we put dick in there, be wherever it's at in two years. So, you know, we're sending money all over Texas, not we're sending it to Louisiana.
All right, I must have been reading, they didn't write me a ticket the other day.
Is it?
Must have been a reason they didn't write me a ticket the other day.
They know me.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, so do I need to modify my motion to make it to twenty-three budget, or do we just not?
Okay, I want to make the motion to approve the purchase of the parts and services to upgrade the jail's intercom system using Guardian's security solution in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven seventy-five as agreed to in December of two thousand and twenty-three. Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Fonda, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? All right, item number eight, approved budget amendment to purchase a patrol vehicle for Newton County Sheriff. So, Sheriff, for truth?
Yeah, uh, when I took offense, uh, I was, uh, asked if I wanted a vehicle or vehicle allowance. I, I put allowance because I felt like I could save the county money, uh, because vehicles cost, uh, at that time were the nothing. I thirties or, uh, low forties, uh, price ran pleasant, I would put insurance on it, plus I would have, I would put my own gas in it. And as well as the maintenance, but I don't have a vehicle allowance anymore. So, you know, I don't think it's, uh, coming from me to drive my personal vehicle, uh, in, uh, official capacity. At the time I get a vehicle out.
But, yeah, when we did it, uh, twenty twenty-four budget, you know, your salary, you had twenty-one thousand, five hundred vehicle allowance. So I rolled that into the salary and I got the direction from Comptroller's office. They said anything that can be considered, uh, salary under I R S guidelines, you know, that you pay taxes on, is considered salary. So I took the wording of vehicle allowance away. They just added that to your salary, which, and then bumped that up to seventy-five thousand, and then gave you a three percent raise to bring it up to seventy-seven, two fifty. So, even though you didn't, you didn't lose the allowance, it was just added in as salary. So.
Well, I see it a different way and everything, and, uh, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable driving my own personal vehicle.
Well, I, I agree, the county should, you know, you're, you should drive a county vehicle, then use the county's gas.
Well, I, I agree. The county should, you know, you're, you should drive a county vehicle and use the county's gas instead of your own. But, you know, bottom line is you didn't lose the money, it just got included.
Going forward.
Okay.
That's, that's why I'm here. I'm not asking for the money, I'm asking for a vehicle.
Yes.
So let me, let me ask a question. I think the same thing happened to me in precinct four. It was somewhat different because the SB twenty-two and the confusion or the difference with SB twenty-two and the, the pay. So for clarity, you don't have a vehicle currently available to you in your fleet to drive?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, on uh, there's vehicles out there that need to repair, uh that I'm probably gonna dispose of. They need major repairs and we have our one that's under repair and we have a spare, so we have a bad vehicle drive.
So should this read, I mean, just like with, in my case, it wasn't, it was to buy a truck for the commissioner to drive. It's not, you know, if the sheriff needs a truck, he needs a truck and we need to provide him with that. Um. Just.
You're not adding to the fleet, you're buying one for him specifically?
No, I think, I think we're, we're, we're adding to the fleet, but I mean, what he does with it's his business, it's his department. The truck I drive belongs to precinct four, it's no different. You know, it's two years, if I decide to put that, you know, make that a crew truck, that's my decision.
So I think you're saying it would, your motion would say purchase a patrol vehicle for the Newton County Sheriff's Department. And then it would be another vehicle in the department for him to.
I wouldn't think so.
Basically that, you know, that's where I look at it. Uh I'm not, it's for work and it's to get the part of the fleet.
Well, it would be handed down though, I mean, it would be handed down after X amount of miles.
Right, right, that's it. You hand, you hand a cop down.
Yeah.
When someone, we're getting a new vehicle in, new vehicle comes in, cop gets it, they take their vehicle and hand it down. But in my case, I don't have anything ahead of that. That's my, mine is going through the ranch. Uh so, yeah, that's the way it's done.
I agree, but it wouldn't be specifically for him, it's for the department. And because if you did it specifically for him, he, in theory, he'd be the only one that could use it and it couldn't be passed down. So it would be one for the, for their fleet.
And if we, if we just, if we did it for him, it would almost be part of his salary, we'd be buying it for him, we're buying it for the sheriff's department. What Sheriff Burby does with it's his business, right?
Yeah, you know, one of the things that, like I said before, this SB twenty-two thing, you know, it ain't about the money. It's about the general principle of it, you know, uh I'm not doing this job for money, obviously and everything. But I have to be functional, you know, I'm not gonna put uh my well-being at risk anymore because of the fact that I'm not getting compensated for that vehicle. Everything. Uh before and after, it was a risk that I took on because I was getting compensated for that uh vehicle. That's not the case. Need a vehicle to do the work.
So you have one on order right now, right, Sheriff?
Hopefully, uh, yeah.
Already budgeted. So how many, you're asking for one more or?
Yeah, one, this is in addition to what we have.
No, it is salary already put in place to borrow his mileage, whatever. His salary was fifty-two, something, was twenty-one thousand five hundred vehicle allowance and the twelve hundred dollar cell phone line. So it brought total package to seventy-three nine hundred. So to be eligible for the SB twenty-two to apply, his salary had to be seventy-five thousand. So we bumped that up to seventy-five thousand, gave him a three percent raise, we put it up to seventy-seven two fifty. And so that's what it's at now. It doesn't say vehicle allowance, it's just total salary package. Like I said, I, I spoke with the comptroller's office and anything that, you know, same with the deputy's hazard pay. If it's considered income, you know, by the IRS standards as far as income, it's, it's salary. So I just included everything together, took the wording off for vehicle allowance and just made everything salary. And then added to it.
So I guess my question is, do you want to, us to reach you a vehicle or do you want, and I know that you're asking for us to buy you a vehicle. I want you to tell me, would you rather the county renters or are you pretty firm on us buying you one?
We're buying it, probably not.
Yeah, we're not, we're not buying it for the sheriff.
Right.
I mean, if we do this, the only way we can do it is buy the sheriff's department an additional vehicle as compared to what he has ordered. And then he manages it, you know, if we sit here today and say we're buying it for the sheriff, it could get into that. I'm not saying any of that, I'm just saying.
It's gonna be the least, the least vehicle practice here that we've continued, we've been doing.
No, that's, we're gonna continue to go that route. It's just in addition to we just add one number to what we previously would have had, you know what I mean?
Right.
Yeah. You know, I, I, y'all heard me say this before, I mean, I'm all for getting him a vehicle, I'm a hundred percent. But you know, also our county judge, the people that services county need a vehicle to run around the county and to go, you know, you got probates and do it. Nah, right? You're gonna use your vehicle to do that. In my opinion, I'm on the soapbox now. That's not right, it's not right to the judge and the judge's family. And uh I'm gonna go ahead and shut up, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve purchasing an additional vehicle for the sheriff's department, department fleet.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Brown.
Will that work, Sheriff?
Yeah, it'll work. Yeah, I wanna say this, you know, we have three vehicles in X, I'm gonna say X has to need work. If someone willing to pay to get the mechanical work done, we'll take, strike uh stop off self-vehicle and pass them in the county because normally that's what happens. But they need some major work. So.
Sounds like us.
I mean.
Yeah. I mean, I would have to have the budget money to fix it. I mean, we don't got no money in our budget.
Well, I'm just letting you know it's fair. So.
I'll pass. I'm just not being on a, I guess I've been pretty firm about letting the elected official pick either to rent, we rent theirs or we buy them one. I've never, like, that's our option to be able to do that.
You mean a vehicle allowance, is that what you're saying?
Like it's always been.
Well, y'all voted to do away with it twenty twenty-three.
No, we didn't, we, no, we didn't vote, this court did not vote.
Right now, whether you saying what you're saying, there's no way that could happen this year.
Okay.
There's no way because Courtney, you'll explain that to them.
No, I, I get it, I get it. I just don't, I just don't want it to go.
Through the public and we can't make any changes to any elected officials throughout.
I, I need that.
Budget time, if you, the court comes back and says, hey, we want to give him back his uh vehicle allowance, then that would be another deal. But through the twenty twenty-four budget, he cannot make any changes to his salary.
Yeah, that's why I'm going this route because I, I know that.
Right.
I know that. It's life cleaner for me and I think it was a false statement to the county to bring out a vehicle now.
Okay.
That's just me.
Well, I can tell you, I don't think I could drive my personal vehicle for twenty-one thousand dollars a year and do the job I'm doing now. But you know, I, I understand what you're saying, just like the trucks you guys have, you know. The court called a lot of criticism, I heard it when I was campaigning about the big old trucks you guys have. But the fact of the matter is, when and if you decide or you need to make that a truck for your crew, you can put that into your fleet, take your allowance or whatever, buy another one because they're, they're made for that. I wish I had one of them. If y'all want to get rid of one of them, I'll take one. But anyways, I'm gonna stick with my motion to buy an additional, I'm second.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Fonda, all in favor? All against? All right, uh item number nine. Uh approve budget amendment to reinstate the hazardous duty pay for all peace officers assigned to the Newton County Sheriff's Office in the amount of a hundred dollars and this is a monthly hundred dollars a month.
Right.
And, you know, additionally, the same here is, you know, it was considered under IRS guidelines as paid. So it was just, the wording was took off for hazardous pay, it was added to the salary and then they were all increased to the minimum forty-five thousand. Then, you know, that's, that's where we went on that.
Well, one of the things with this SB twenty-two was a lot of ambiguity there and a lot of the, the final guidelines didn't come out for the twenty-seventh of December. And uh, you know, I, I didn't know exactly what it was, was gonna lead to, but information we was getting uh was a little different than what it ended up being. I'll tell you, that's how government did it. But the thing is, my, my guys, uh and girls saw that there hasn't duty pay was not there and everything. One of the things that they thought uh and mindful, I feel the same way, well, my job is not hazardous anymore and everything. And uh it, it, that's what uh why I went forward and it, and everything to get that reinstated. Uh because that was, you know, really talking about a thing.
Yeah. And the same with that, you know, it's, it was there, but it's just not labeled as hazard duty pay. But, you know, it was like a hundred dollars a month per deputy, if I'm, if I'm correct on that.
Yes.
Right.
So a hundred dollars a month per deputy. Um and as far as the, the SB twenty-two money is three hundred and fifty thousand that the county should get. You know, so, you know, we applied for it, it hadn't came yet, but you know, the county should get it. And as far as the, the wage increase for the deputies, the jailers and everything, you know, along with the uh increase in benefits, you know, we were already close to the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. And, and, and again, one of the things, the reason why I'm here about that is because we needed to read out exactly what happened. I can't, you know, I cannot speak for you, you know, that's you speaking for yourself, but there was a year you say that, not me say that. Okay, this is official record, so uh.
All others speak?
Yeah, you can speak.
Kind of side swing. And coming from us and, and all the officers, you know, the, the House Senate bill to pass to give us a raise, uh we, we've needed that for a long time.
Yes, I agree.
And we went and worked this county for a few years without getting raised at all. Okay, so when, when we look at our paychecks and we're talking about twelve hundred dollars a year, uh and you take that away, it's like you're punishing us because uh the government wants to give us a raise. You understand what I'm saying? And I understand the way you're looking at it and you're putting it in, but it's almost like we feel like you're sneaking in there to do that. You know what I mean? Because we feel like, you know, we're losing twelve hundred dollars.
Okay, but as far as overall compensation, did you not get a, a pretty?
Right, but why would the, why would that be taken away from us? Why would the twelve hundred dollars a year be taken away because the government gave us a raise? Did the House send them?
Is it taken away? It's like I have a checking account and I have a savings account. And every month I put money into my savings, right? Say I'm putting a hundred in there. And the bank says, we're not gonna do savings anymore, but this money is still gonna be yours. We're just gonna roll it over into your checking and we're not gonna call it a savings anymore. That money is still mine and it's still there. I just don't have this title to that account anymore.
Yes, the money was.
Well, you, you're looking at people who come to work, work four hours a day, they get their statement, they'll see that there, they'll look at it like, I lost it. But again, we just have to be transparent. We just need to be uh spell out what happened and what didn't happen. So we can dispel any rumors, any, uh, any misgivings.
In my office that day, that was what was discussed, was the judge had said he was gonna roll that into the salary, then he was gonna give the Senate bill on top of that. That's where I think the confusion, because your deputies did not hear that. So in the conversation that we had in my office, that was all discussed.
And like I said too, just a minute ago, that there was a lot of ambiguity in what SB twenty-two was gonna say. Because I went to meeting at the Sheriff's uh Association and they told us something somewhat different. And like I said, um the really guidelines didn't come out to the end of December. Uh at that point, I think the budget was already settled.
It was already settled.
So again, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just telling you what.
Yeah.
Also.
I, I was going off the control.
You know, I, my understanding is that was sorry, I'm not gonna get a long dissertation about who said what and when. Everybody did it, let's move forward. That's why I'm here, on the record. So.
You know, I, I, from, from my standpoint, two thousand and twenty-three budgeting cycle, it was your first go at it, right?
Yeah.
And we didn't have the Commissioner Court schedule set up to meet like weekly. I think next year's, for this year's schedule, when we get to whatever month it is, July, August, we got Commissioner Court's regular meetings like every week of the month so we can have those, so we can have those workshops. But um I think that was part of it, you know, we just didn't get together and talk a lot and hash some of this out. So what's the request? Add, basically to add hazard payback and that's, it's twelve hundred dollars each and it's how many deputies, how much money we're talking about?
Twenty thirteen, thirteen thousand.
Because normally we have fifteen thousand, but we still got fifteen. So we're talking about thirteen thousand, so.
But they actually already got.
Yeah, already received.
Sixteen thousand dollars, that was budget, I mean, every year and hazard pay is sixteen thousand dollars. And that's what was rolled up into the salary, sixteen thousand dollars. So yes, it was rolled up into the salary so that that might not have been paid away in the twenty twenty-four. But when you decide to do it, that's the Commissioner's fault.
And that's my job is that. That's what I expected. So. Uh, you have?
My question is, okay, that, that statement or that word, that phrase hazardous duty, I think that, you know, if I was in that position, I would wanna see hazardous duty because I'm not just a regular citizen. And they are in some hazardous duty at all time, anytime they leave the office. If, if we uh took that amount and, and uh call it, even if the salaries stay what they were, we ought to call it what it is. And going forward, I think next year, as we go through budget, if they would, we would put that hazardous duty phrase back on there, it'd make a lot of folks feel better. I mean, even if we have new officers coming in from other counties, they normally get hazardous duty and they come over here and don't see hazardous duty, well, it draws a question mark more than likely. And so what I'm saying is that if, let's call it what it is, if it's part of their salary, we need to separate that amount and during budget time, give them their salary and this, this hazardous duty part representing these dollars here. It was as part of the, you know, the comptroller's office said, you know, you have certificate pay and hazard duty pay. Certificate pay is different from, you know, the, the compensa, copper's compensation, you know, you couldn't, you know, you, you leave that alone. The hazard duty pay, you could roll it in, uh add it to the salary and then give them the increase. So the, the certificate pay, we didn't, we didn't do anything with.
Well, one of the things, like the commissioner, why, you're, I can say this, this is very serious. You go to a place and you start looking at what they offer, you know, education, certificate pay, uh those kind of things, hazardous duty pay. Over time, that's, that's stimulating a police officer's mind, the biggest people really care. When, when, uh I, I was impressed, but I can't give a value. Uh y'all feel that, if it didn't have education, right? I was impressed with that, a lot of folks don't do that. A lot of folks don't do that. And because, and before SB twenty-two, that, those, that little add-on made a little bit of difference when someone signed on the line and say, I'm gonna go find somewhere. So that's just my.
But Judge, you that, you know, you was doing the budget last year, trying to get a balanced budget and all that thing. Looking at it now as the CFO of the county, are we in a financial position to go ahead and add this money in, back to the deputies or do you know that at this given?
We'd like to cut somewhere else, are you?
So there wasn't enough rollover money in the sheriff's patrol budget when we. So there wasn't enough rollover money in the sheriff's patrol budget when we take the security systems out, the sixty-eight thousand dollars out to pay the sixteen thousand?
Fair.
Because we didn't, you know, we didn't know what the rollover money was gonna be from the sheriff department.
But we also have to pay back T D M, one point two million dollars.
Yes, and it's, it's. Uh, two hundred thousand.
Well, I see both sides. So from your side, the money's there, but from their side, they're missing the wording, you know, and I, well, in their, in their eyes, they got a, they got a hundred dollar cut.
Yeah.
In their eyes, they got a hundred dollar cut.
Yeah.
Because, because you was not supposed to mess with their immediate salary as it was. It's supposed to be added to it, on the, uh, not take away.
Well, so I, I, I was in the school and budgeting in Galveston with the auditor and the judge, and that question was asked at least six times, maybe seven. And it was very clear in that training that everything that's paid adds up to that. So whatever you call it, it is. And then afterwards, there was a huddle meeting with the facilitator who said the same thing the judge is saying. And they were from the state comptroller's office, so when you say what it should be or shouldn't be, it's, it's like you said, it's, it's a gray area in my opinion.
I think it's, it's like I said, the phrase, uh, hazardous pay. I mean, if I'm a full-fledged fireman, and I went to every school they offer, and I'm, I, I know that I'm, um, first-class fireman, I don't want to go to a county where they gonna call me a first responder. I wanna be called a fireman. See what I'm saying? And that, it has nothing to do with the money, in my opinion. Well, it does too, but what I'm, what I'm getting over is that, I think that that's a selling point for our county. If, if, whenever we try to hire a officer, they come here and we have hazardous duty.
Yes, you're right.
And I think that that, that needs to be there for our benefit in the home run. Comptroller didn't tell us to take that, that, that phrase away, hazardous duty. I promise you that.
I think if it stayed on there, we're gonna be having this kind of thing.
True. Well, you know what?
And budget, you redirect the money to whatever you did, said, budgeted. And they saw that, that was the first thing that they said to me. So, all right, you get that question for me? So, thank you, Judge, like Commissioner.
I don't, I don't know if we can keep talking, keep, keep talking to keep making a decision, let's talk.
But they done got the money, or the judge. Boy, that's.
I agree about the money. Money's there. Believe we can do that. Also believe we can do better.
This year is gonna be tough to do.
You're saying we would have to cut something else to fund?
Uh, once we pay T D M, we'll, we'll eventually have to cut something.
Once we pay the two twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Or the eight hundred plus the two twenty-seven?
Well, between now and next, um, March, county's gotta pay one point two million back.
Well, polish up that attorney group, because I am not gonna vote to pay one point two million back between now and March to T D M.
Well, it's either that or we lose all.
That's next year.
Take it.
I'm talking about twenty twenty-five.
Oh.
Yeah.
March of next year.
That's thirteen months.
Yeah, hopefully we can properly make a lot of.
Then everybody's kind of torn, because you wanted to have hazard pay, but you also know that they already are getting it, it should not call that. So if you're not gonna give them the additional hundred dollars, is there a way to put it in, like on the paycheck line? Or in the job description that says, I know they're gonna really including.
There's a line, I don't know if there, I would just have to break it up, have to prove it all this year into the break of the salary, so we would have to do a new, probably get. I'm just saying, like on the wording for it, where it says on the, on the line, you've got your certificate pay, your salary, it's like a hundred dollars, it says the salary, is that what I'm saying? Saying take a hundred dollars, no, I'm just saying add that to the line, to my description, so.
So. So there's not enough.
It already said that.
It's got two million dollars.
I mean, I'm all for giving them, I'm saying.
It's got. So this is it, Judge, from listening to the auditor this morning, sheriff ended up rollover amount for two hundred thousand. We basically took a hundred thousand of that away today, with the security system and the thing, give it back. Yeah, there's a hundred thousand in the budget in twenty-four that we weren't counting on when we looked at the taxes coming in. So there's a hundred thousand coming, rolling over into the twenty-four budget that wasn't, it wasn't in front of you when you did this. So my question to you is, if you'd have known that, if you'd have known at the time, hey, there's a hundred thousand gonna roll over in payroll.
Counting on the rollover to pay the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, uh, T D M.
So the answer is no, you was gonna use that money for something else?
Yeah, it, it was going back to basically payment, where we're gonna get that money anyway.
Now, I'm gonna share with, uh, ten.
Fifteen?
Normally we're full at fifteen, so I have to go up in the position.
Fifty-five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand five hundred.
Yes, that's in.
I'll figure that.
Fifteen with serious fourth thing without.
We'll make a motion, Judge. We'll make a motion that we increase the salary of the patrol deputies, um, by a hundred dollars a month, place a line item on their paycheck, that the hundred dollars a month in efficiency for hazardous duty pay. I second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell. Did y'all, did y'all hear that? Okay, hey, can you, can you, yeah.
Start that, because we gotta have payroll to change the, I mean, this.
Okay, I can handle that. I'm gonna make a motion that on March first.
Call, call.
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that on March first, we increase the salary of the deputies, uh, patrol deputies specifically by a hundred dollars a month and place a line item in payroll to call that hazard pay. Thank you, March first.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell. Uh-uh.
I second.
Oh, and second by Commissioner Fombi, I didn't even say. All in favor?
I, I don't.
All against?
Ah.
So, motion okay? Against. Yeah, me too.
I'm for it.
All right, uh. All right, we'll move to the next page. I didn't vote. I'm down that and then you're not sure, do you?
Actually, you didn't.
I, I usually only try to vote when there's a tie, so. And we hadn't had them make, too many of them lately. All right, uh, we're moving on to item number eighteen. Uh, discuss and consider proclaiming February as fair housing month and authorizing the posting publication of the Fair Housing Public Service Amendment. And this is a yearly thing, uh, uh, that part of the HUD and, uh.
Just get on with it.
All right, I make a motion, we proclaim February as fair, fair housing month and authorize the posting and publication of it. All right, all in favor?
All right.
All against? All right, item number nineteen, approve the purchase of a S D L ninety-seven Skid steer from Kubota through the buy board, uh, with financing through First National Bank. This is for Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, so this is, um, this is basically following the example Danny did on his boom mower. Uh, what this is gonna do, so I have the money, just real quickly, I, I budgeted the money to buy it outright. Um, but looking at what Commissioner Benson did, by doing it through a financing process, it will allow me to asphalt another road in two thousand and twenty-four. And it will cost the taxpayers around seventy-five hundred dollars in interest. And I feel like that seventy, seventy-five hundred dollars in interest is well worth getting that road asphalted. That's why I'm wanting to go the route of financing versus full payment. I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fombi?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor of the purchase?
Uh.
All against? All right, item number twenty, approve resolution for the two thousand and twenty-four Violence Against Women Special Prosecutor Grant. Uh, this continuation, continued grant that helps supplement the salary of one of the assist, district attorneys.
So this is a grant that's been in existence for, this will be the fifteenth year, and it supplements John Mert's salary. Um, you have a match on it, but the match is already budgeted, it's been budgeted for fifteen years. And the resolution basically says that the county agrees that violence against women is a serious problem and that we need a prosecutor that we dedicated to helping with protective warriors and, um, the, we assisting through the process of blowing out a protective warrior and also representing them in court for objective. Helping help women, but making sure they don't become a repeat victim, offering services to them, referring them to places. That person coordinates with law enforcement and others to make sure that we combat this, this serious problem.
I've made the motion to approve a resolution for two thousand and twenty-four Violence Against Women Special Prosecutor Grant.
All right, motion been made by Commissioner Powell?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right, item number twenty-one, approve procedure and guidelines for public information requests, including charging for the production of the two.
One and twenty-two, and Misty has been doing a lot of research on it, has some suggestions. She has a draft and policy and procedure ready. She's out sick, and so I was gonna ask that we table these two items until our next meeting. So that she can be here, she's on teams, but we need an executive session to discuss it, or a litigation that might come up from it. So since she can't get into the executive session, I'd like to table those two items at some next meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we table, uh, item number twenty-one and twenty-two until the next commissioner's court. Second, all right, uh, all in favor?
All right.
All against? All right, item number twenty-three, consideration and possible action on procurement of administration and engineering services in conjunction with the dismissal of a two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, uh, TXCVBG application in support of the Bonware Water Supply Corporation. And this is, uh, Bonware Water Supply wants to go out, uh, for a grant through, uh, Mark Taylor to upgrade their system. Their plan is like thirty-something years old, and then, uh, it's, it needs some upgrades to uh, service their community and hopefully future expansion with the battlefield plan.
Yeah, I'm on it.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Fombi? Second, second by Commissioner White, oh, I mean, uh, Benson? All in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right, uh, item number twenty-four, uh, budget amendments, we don't have any. Item number twenty-five is payment of bills.
Greenbridge Darryl, forty-two thousand, three hundred five dollars and seventy-one cents. Greenbridge Precinct Four, five hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Missional Special Precinct One, eight thousand eighty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Missional Special Precinct Two, twenty thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Missional Special Precinct Three, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Special Precinct Four, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Solid Waste disposal, one hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-six cents. Motor registration, two thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Law library, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars. Dayton County Library, one hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-six. Newton County, I mean District Attorney Contra Man, two thousand, six hundred thirty dollars and thirty-five cents. Hazard mitigation grant, which is the T D M plan, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Courthouse emergency grant, which is courthouse payment number two, two hundred ninety thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifteen. Our total, uh, all run, six hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-five cents.
Question, that two twenty-seven, uh, for grant?
That's the T D M, that's the T D M payment.
I know, but is that part of the, is that part of the, the one point two that we get?
So, this is the whole, this is part of Hurricane I. Seventeen ninety-one is the grant. All the other money that's left outstanding is grant number forty-two, sixty-six.
Right, I understand that, but.
It's eight hundred and something.
That's what I thought, okay.
So altogether, it was one point two.
Yeah, okay.
But the other money, from my understanding, I know it hasn't been bought and poured, but the other money is supposed to be maybe set up in a payment plan, is that correct, Judge? Is that what you've been?
Both, I'll propose.
No, it won't be paid out, the whole, won't.
No, it won't be paid out, uh, uh.
It's really, it's, I know, I think originally it was one point two, we included some other, but it's really just a little bit over a million dollars.
Right.
Yeah, it's eight hundred and eighty-something, two twenty-seven, so it's.
Right, close to one.
Yeah, because that number, that eight hundred has fluctuated quite a bit. We have a solid number.
I think it's reasonable.
And the other ones from the Hurricane Harvey, uh, flood byouts. I make a motion, we pay the bills. All right, motion is made by Commissioner Benson?
And also I wanna say one thing too, we're gonna get, um, on the courthouse payment, we will be receiving money back on all that, just have to, I'll tell her.
Yes.
Okay. If I could on that, on that courthouse, while we're talking about that, you know, those, those courthouse, courthouse, um, update meetings that you have, I've attended a couple of them. If we can get that, uh, posted to where all the commissioners could go to that, it's really, it's, it's very informing and you see the process that is used to verify the work spend, orders, validation of bills and all that. And I feel good signing that today because set through one of the meetings, if we could get that posted where all the commissioners could go, it would be at least available to them if they can get breakaway from there.
Also on that, with that being said, at the last meeting, I had told the man that he was gonna get payment number two and three. Payment number three is not made it to my office yet, I need to let him know that.
Okay. He's gonna get, he'll, he'll get payment number two.
Yeah, payment number two, payment number three will be turned in.
Yes.
Just want to let him know that.
All right, uh, motion to pay the bills was made by Commissioner Benson? Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh.
All against? Motion. I need the motion from the left side.
Oh, oh, wait, wait.
Agenda, I, it's, I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody voted to approve the consent. And so I think they'll just go through and reading it and seeing it there, but it needs to be approved. That's where things go that, we're not gonna break down by item, so.
Okay.
And then, I think that should also be, you should be voting to approve the consent. Y'all reviewed it, y'all saw what minutes were there, so it's missing. And nobody approves those, nobody approves the reports, so we need to make sure we're getting. So we need to make sure we're good.
I make the motion we approve her.
The whole consent.
Consent.
Already continuing education certificates.
Do that. I think today we, don't we?
We've all been missing it. Lots of the meetings.
Yeah.
It, yeah, I think we.
Going too fast.
Going too fast, but uh, as far as, you know, waiting like on some of the minutes to be. So I've kind of skipped over, so. Okay.
Good, second. Thank you.
So, uh, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. I make. Motion made by Commissioner Benson.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? All right, and we had the motion from the left side to adjourn, so.
Hey, one thing I would say before we adjourn, I noticed in these that the, the electronic books checkout for the library and precinct book was forty-eight percent total electronic checkout. So I wish our library group was here, but they're doing a good job of, good, got to sign up out there and they're attracting new people. That's exciting.
Good.
Vote a second. Sure.
All right, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? I thought we already did that.